We're good. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting back to order.
This one was so big.
Okay.
It's there.
Sarah, you're being summoned.
I don't wanna use it. Sarah, you ready? All right, we're gonna call the meeting back to order and start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up is our program review from Wright Tech Center with Brian Kozlowski.
I am always so appreciative of the opportunity to come and visit with our school boards. I thank you again. And it's been three years since we've been in person. I think I've done a virtual presentation, but it's nice to be back in person. So, thank you for having us tonight. I'll read along with my notes as well as they see that you have it on the screen. And we always like to start off, of course, with just reviewing our mission statement as far as partnering with the member districts and industry to prepare the students for careers, post-secondary education, and lifelong learning. So, our next slide shows us that we're celebrating 50 years as a advanced career in tech program as a vocational cooperative. And so, thank you to Delano School Board and our member districts for supporting Wright Tech Center for 50 years. And so, the banners that we have displayed across the campus are celebrating 50 years of career in technical education. And then, we also have a program banner for the same. And, you know, as time passes and we're over the fact that we're celebrating our 50th year, what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna be changing out the 50 years of career in tech education with, we're gonna have a member district banner represented as well. So, we'll have each of our eight member districts recognized as well as our current tech programs on our Wright Tech campus because we couldn't do without you. Our enrollment is continuing to be stable. And if you look at Delano's enrollment with 67 this year, we have 65 students from Delano scheduled for tours of Wright Tech tomorrow. I think they arrive at 10 o'clock tomorrow. And Mr. Carson's presenting with, or visiting with your parents and your principal to answer any questions about Wright Tech classes this evening. I think Mr. Carson's been over here. This is his third time. And so, thank you to the administration, too, for inviting us over and being a part of visiting with your parents to be able to help answer any questions that they may have as far as the opportunities at Wright Tech Center. So, then you can see also as far as the tech enrollment is how it compares to other districts and then also based on each of the programs. So, on the next slide, you can see all of the years, or 30, I think I've got 30-some years that are, and it's really hard to see. So, when you bring out, get out your bifocals or magnifying glasses, you can look at it a little bit more closer in detail. But it just shows you over the years as far as the programs. And, you know, over time, some programs have come, some programs have gone. And the main ones continue to, you know, be highlighted with the seven or eight main programs that we've always continued to offer as far as auto tech and welding tech and health science and graphic communications and law enforcement, first responder, and cosmetology. And so, what we hope to do when we look at our next slide is we take a look at development of new classes. And so, some of the few, just few of the classes that we hope to be able to offer in the very near future. One is within the construction trades program and offering plumbing, electrical, and HVAC. We have a pretty large construction trade shop. And most of the time, the students are building the house, which the students are finishing up the sheet rock now and they'll be taping here soon. And, but within that program, we feel that we're sized well enough within that space to be able to offer another instructor because we do have another spare classroom that we can co-teach, so to speak. So, it'll be able to increase our enrollment within the construction trades program. Another class is a heavy equipment operator program that we're hopeful for. We've been working with the local 49ers in hopes of securing a grant. And we all know how difficult the grants are, but we're still remain hopeful and optimistic that we're gonna be able to do that. And so, the bottom page, the next slide, is as far as all of our member district trends. And so, when we look at the importance of adding programs, because you can see over time, our member districts' enrollment continues to just increase a little bit each year, which is a great thing within our eight member districts. But what you can see on the bottom line, on the red line, where our Wright Tech classes have relatively remained the same. But the reason for that, too, is all of our classes that I just shared with you are pretty much full and at capacity year after year after year. And so, with our member districts increasing enrollment and Wright Tech Centers remaining flat, the only way that we're gonna be able to help offset some of that, I guess, maybe a little bit challenging for our member districts to be able to offer career in tech classes. But we're not be able, we're not able to offer anymore at this point either. So, we're really hopeful of being able to add a class to be able to take off some of that pressure from our member districts and then be able to continue to kind of refresh Wright Tech Center, too, and add some programming in time. And so, the next slide. So, this is Delano's usage trends. Now, you can see the, as far as the amount of enrollment, how, you know, we've been on pretty much a steady increase since the 2018 school year. And now, you know, we're at 72 last year and 67 this year. And, you know, maybe in that upper 60s to, you know, high 60s, you know, after our tours. Our preregistration is due the 1st of March. And then, we'll be taking a look at numbers and the wait lists and shifting some students within any of the programs that have openings. And so, if there's students that are on a waitlist and we have any program openings within, you know, programs with students that may not have registered yet, we can balance things out. Each of the districts are given an allocation enrollment, a class size enrollment allocation based on really the previous year's enrollment. So, it helps when your enrollment has increased and can remain stabilized within that area because then you're pretty much guaranteed the number of spots. What's challenging is when some districts dip down, then other member districts are gonna grab those onto those open spots. And so, now, it may be a while before your allocation amounts for your amount of open seats become available again. So, you know, when I had mentioned that we had hoped to increase our classes offered at the tech side, we had a somewhat of a rebranding of our academy over the last couple of years. And so, we're the Wright Tech and we're the Wright Academy. Where the Wright Tech is the advanced career in tech classes and the Wright Academy is our ALC. So, when we have looked at our revenue and our revenue for our tech classes remains pretty consistent. And we've asked for and have received the same general ed increase as what the member districts have received as far as if you, from the state. So, 2%, we asked for 2%, 2.5%, 2.5%. And so, that allocation number has remained the same. And I'll share with you how that breaks down as far as how it's allocated. The real challenge financially for Wright Technical Center as a district has come from, I guess, two things. We know that we've had facilities that have needed to be addressed and we've been working hard to make the necessary repairs and also continue to make improvements where absolutely necessary. The second area is within just stabilizing that enrollment from COVID. And we're all affected by COVID. And so, you can see on the next slides are somewhat related to the, well, it's all related to the academy and our enrollment and how that enrollment decline has affected our revenue. Now, this slide right here actually shares with you that we are in a good position again within the Wright Academy. When you look at that green line for the 22, 23, we are at or above the five-year average with, you know, and then also within, within the 20, you know, from the 21 and everything. So, we're sitting good enrollment-wise within the academy. We have 10 students now in our middle level, which is fantastic. Our target enrollment was 10 to 12. And so, now, our enrollment in the middle level that we started at the worst time, whenever you think about when we started our middle level academy was the first year of COVID. And so, that was really difficult for us. But now, our academy, our middle level is up. And my, our counselor shared with me this afternoon that we only have four students on the waitlist. Granted that we know that we're heading into end of semesters and within the second trimester, there may be students that are struggling that may come our way to the academy to work on their credit recovery and those things. So, enrollment is doing well. So, if we take a look at our finance picture on the next couple of slides, fund balance is not healthy. And so, how do we help grow that? Well, the only thing we really have any control over is our enrollment in the academy. And so, it's important that we keep the academy enrollment in the mid to high 90s. And also, you know, when we think about the increase in percentage of revenue from the state for the gen ed revenue, that also comes our way because we bill back for the academy 90% and then the member districts retain 10% of that. And by statute, we can only bill for up to 100%. And so, we're billing for 90 for the academy side. So, when you think about the tech center, the Wright Tech classes, that's a fixed number. And I'll share that with you in the next few slides. With the academy, the enrollment being stable, then we bill that back to the member district based on the revenue that you're receiving from the state. And then, we bill you for that. You retain 10% and we get the 90 for the academy side. So, the fund balance has been challenging. We have five payments left. And so, if you wanna flip to the next slide, these are our main sources of revenue outside of the academy with the billing for the tuition. So, when we look at that first column, that first column is our allocation. So, with that 1.448 million, that is what we receive from all of the eight member districts to help support all of our other programs as well. That next column is our building bond. And so, we have five payments left on that, 239,000. And that's a biggie because twice a month, in June and December, we have a $120,000 payment, which doesn't seem like a lot when, but when we have a $4 million budget is all it's, and especially when the fund balance is in a position that it is, it is difficult. And then, we did on the next column, the purple one, it's LTFM. We borrowed 650,000 against our LTFM and to pay for a wall restoration project. And so, of that 167, we have about 80,000 to use for facilities, maintenance, and those types of things. And so, what we've talked about in principle is once those five payments for the bond are done, we're hopeful of being able to shift that to LTFM without any tax impact to the taxpayers at all because it would just be shifting. But that'll be June of 2025 will be that last payment. And so, when we do the LTFM, we do the LTFM in June of 2024 for fiscal '26. So, in a year from June, I'll be asking for that resolution from all of our board members. And I review this with the superintendents. We meet, try to meet once a month towards the end of each month to review everything. And so, there's absolutely, everything that I'm sharing with you, the superintendents, we've talked about. And we've still got some time as we move to that position. But it's critical as far as our facilities. The next one is our CTE levy for our career in tech instructors and programs with that 35%. And then, the transitional disabled is also part of our revenue. So, those are the main four revenue sources along with the enrollment that we bill back for the academy. The next slide is how we determine what your dollar amounts are for that, for the allocation for the first column on the left with that 1.4. And we take the October 1 numbers, which this year we know are 67. And then, we take the February 1 numbers, which based on the course of the year, things shuffle around a little bit and there will be, some districts may have an increase. None of them will have an increase because they're all year-long courses and it's really difficult to enter into semester time. But some students, we lose through attrition and everything else during the course of the semester. So, February 1 numbers then determines the average. And so, for FY '23, our member district, Delano, is paying 10.71% of that 1.4 million. And then, the next slide is the assessments for FY '24. And so, currently, you know, Delano had 67 students. That yellow shaded 67, that'll be average to find out what Delano's percentage for FY '24 is, which right now stands at 9.99. The next slide, this is where really, where we've really been hurt financially. When you take a look at our academy tuition, general ed, and special ed revenue, how it declined from over the period of COVID and we're slowly climbing back to where we need to be at. And so, when we look at our enrollment having been increased, but our special ed revenue and our general ed revenue has really been decreased. Our special ed population is really, I think, 50% of what it was at the time when it was, when our revenue was at its highest. Targeted services, the next slide, you can see also that's where we've really taken a hit. Even though it's only 60,000 a year, that targeted services revenue is intended to help offset our middle level program. And so, we're inching back. I think we're only 8,000 short of the three-year average. And so, we're hopeful of continuing to build that back up. And then, our summer revenue, if you take a look at the next chart. And so, when we take a look at all of the items that have affected our academy revenue, we've lost about $380,000 over the last two years as far as what our revenue in the academy had been previously. That's gonna affect that fund balance. And so, when we see that fund balance being as low as it is, it's two main reasons. We continue to spend dollars on facilities to maintain them and make necessary repairs that are 80,000 remaining and LTFM just doesn't spread far enough. And then, also, the decrease in the academy revenue. So, what we're hopeful of is, I know it's a long shot and I've just shared this information with our superintendents this week, is that we're lining up in the capital like everybody else is and we are asking for a piece of that pie. We are the last true vocational cooperative standing in the state of Minnesota. And we're hoping that that resonates with people. There are, you know, the intermediate districts, they all offer programs similar to ours. Three of the four, they're located on college campuses where they don't have those facility concerns that we do. The larger districts, Anoka, they take place on Anoka Campus, Anoka Tech Campus, and others. So, any questions for me? I know I could ramble on a lot. It's so important, though, that, you know, Mr. Gerke being on our board and Mr. Shane being our superintendent and alternates that they've served on our board. It's important for me that if you have any questions, reach out to me through email or a phone call or stop in for a tour if you're new to the board and haven't seen Wright Tech for a while.
Question.
Yes.
So, I think COVID, I mean, I know, there's data that people kind of reassess what their plan after high school is or during high school. And I know you dropped off big time, but your trend looks good. Do you think you're gonna launch past your long-term average? Because, I mean, there seems to be a lot of interest in the trades specifically right now. Do you agree with that?
Oh, absolutely. You know, everybody talks about the pendulum swinging back towards the career in tech and it really is. And the part that's struggling for us is that to, in order to add another program to where we can see the benefits of the students wanting to take more classes, financially, we need to get ourselves stabilized. Because here's, the best example I can share is that when we take a look at the number of students in welding class this year, in welding class, we have 55 in welding 1 and 7 in welding 2. So, with the 62 kids we have in welding October 1, we had 56 students on the waitlist. So, there's 56 students, juniors and seniors, that were not able to get into the welding program. You know, that's as close to a manufacturing that we have within, you know, within, with any of the programs we offer. We talk about our programs being, having transferable skills. Our students are problem solvers. You know, they're critical thinkers and we believe that they're trainable. So, where those 56 students ended up, hopefully, they're in your, our member districts' career in tech programs getting some training and level of welding or other programs that our member districts may offer in the introductory level. So, we really wanna be able to, if we, if we could build another welding lab, that would be probably the area that we'd focus on. Probably one of our most expensive labs as well with the fume collector and the amount of welders that we have. But, great question, yes. And that's why it's so important that we stabilize our fund balance, increase that to where we can add a program to where we can meet and keep up as our member districts trends up. We want ours to trend up. But the only way we're really gonna get ours to trend up above that line in the career in tech classes is by adding a class to be able to increase enrollment.
And then, follow-up question. Do you feel like Delano's number of students over there is high, low, kind of normal? Do you think that number should be bigger or is it above, right?
I think when I look at our trend data that shares where it is that our, where we're at within Delano, I'm very happy to see where it is that it's come. And when you, when I look at that top number, when your blue line has decreased and our blue line, and our red line has decreased, it kind of follows suit and it makes sense. Where I'd be more concerned is yours was shooting up and none of ours was staying flat or dropping. But if our trend line is keeping in line with overall sophomore and junior enrollment, that's what I really look at. And I can share, I can look at all of our member districts and I can see which ones are increasing, which, and then of ours, which one are, if we're laying, if we're flat or decreasing, then it's more of a concern. But if we're following suit based on when Delano's is increased, ours is increased. And when yours is decreased, ours has as well. Yeah, great questions. Thank you. Any other?
A new class offering, and I volunteer my own home, a remodel of kitchens. This is a minimal cost to the school and, I mean, I think they do a great job.
Yep, so remodeling it.
But I would definitely.
It is overwhelming. Update on our home that we, our Wright Tech Center house was supposed, it closed on December 1. We did not receive any bids. But I had two showings on Friday and I had another call today. And so, we continue to advertise it. We're calculating our break even. We will not let it go for less than what it is that is, it costs for us to build it in somewhat projections. We, cabinets are delivered by the end of February. Electrical's done, the plumbing's done. We have flooring left to order and siding left to order and paint colors to pick out and countertops. So, we can pretty much estimate our total cost. And so, not that we're gonna get into a bidding war with those that are interested, but I will, I will know what number it is that is an acceptable number and we're still somewhat early. So, any other questions for me?
Going forward, you're gonna do Habitat for Humanity for the house instead of?
Yes, great question, Amy. Thank you. We had brought our proposal, our agreement from Habitat, Center for Minnesota Habitat, to the board to approve and we had approved it and I had signed it and sent it off. And they came back and decided that they have a capital project that they're gonna be concentrating on. And so, they've withdrawn their, and they also have their general contractor or their general manager or that oversees the, the school builds has just retired. We had explained to them that there would be real no need of any, much supervision of our program since we've been doing it. And so, unfortunately, that is something that we're gonna continue to do ourselves. But we are taking a look at what, if we will continue to do what it is we've always done. One of the people that looked at our house on Friday is interested in doing a pre-build for next year as well because they are a broker, realtor broker, and they have some property over by North Branch. So, challenge is 22,000 to get it moved from Buffalo to North Branch. But get a pretty reasonable house built for that. But please, stop in and see me at Wright Tech and I'll give you a guided tour. And I appreciate your support once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. It has your board minutes and all of our financial affairs attached. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of.
Motion by Jim, second by Sue. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And next up is the resolution for the acceptance of gifts. Jump over to here. All right. Where is Sandy Ruskovich, $250 for families in need of lunch accounts payments? Zoller Photography, $822 for Delano Elementary. Boston Scientific, $130 for Delano Elementary. Zoller Photography, $800 for Delano Intermediate School. Zoller Photography, $800 for Delano High School. Ridgeview Medical, $1,500 for scoreboard sponsorship. Basketball Booster Club, $5,640.50 for boys basketball booster coach. Delano Tiger Activity Booster Club, $5,849.84 for boys hockey booster coach and $5,953.75 for assistant girls basketball booster coach. Dance Booster Club, $3,236.50 for expenses reimbursement. Swim Booster Club, $4,021.89 reimbursement for girls swim, bussing, hotel, and expenses. Initiative Foundation Grant, $600 for Compass. Wright Hennepin Electric, $1,200 for scholarship. City of Delano, $2,695 reimbursement for Disc Golf Science. And Gene Haas Foundation, $2,500 for Orange Crush Robotics Team 3026 FRC. These gifts have been generously offered to Delano Public Schools with the conditions for the programs noted above. Do I have a motion for the adoption of the resolution of acceptance of gifts?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Amy.
All second.
Second by Ryan. We'll call him both. Mr. Gerke?
Aye.
Ms. Baker?
Aye.
Mr. Schauzt?
Aye.
Ms. Roser?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Ms. Deppa?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right, moving on to personnel matters. They are up on the screen now. Not anything big on there that we need to call out. Oh, except for our communications director. Paul Downer is leaving us for Buffalo and has been replaced by Bobby Dalkey. So, we'll welcome her next month to the board meetings. We're excited to have her and we're gonna miss Paul quite a bit. He's not here to say goodbye, but we're gonna miss him. Do we have a motion to accept the personnel matters even though we really don't wanna miss Paul? So moved. Motion by Sue. Do we have second?
All second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Public comment. School patrons are given the opportunity to address the school board regarding items that are not on the agenda. All patrons will be asked to state their name. All patrons will be asked to state their name and address for the record. While the board appreciates feedback from the public in this forum, board members will not comment on or discuss topics brought up by the speakers at this time. Do we have anyone here for a public comment? Do we have anybody here for a public comment? All right, do we have anybody here for a public comment? Moving on to administrative reports. First up, Superintendent Shane.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board and for the opportunity to share a superintendent's update. I will share this PowerPoint with you later on in my Thursday email later on in the week so you can reference back to it, so you don't have to take complete notes today. I will be giving a quiz though at the end of the evening, so please pay attention. Just kidding. Obviously, all of what I report and all the programs that we're looking at throughout the course of the district is in our shared district vision, which is systemic growth towards academic excellence for every learner. If you noticed last week and tomorrow, we'll get a much more detailed report of the governor's proposed budget specifically with education. I can tell you just on general forefront, I would be very pleased to see if he gets this proposed put in there. Some of the major key points I'll share here, first and foremost, they're going to index and how it, this is something that obviously will affect Delano Public Schools, indexing the education funding formula to inflation, which is something that we've been talking about through CEE and other organizations about making it equitable for all districts. That would be a huge move if he gets that proposal put through. Providing universal free meals to students is part of his proposal as well. Reduce the special education cross subsidy, I know I've talked with the board several times, by 50%, which is a considerable move in investment to right-size that funding mechanism. So we're looking forward to seeing some traction there. The last two are not necessarily dealing with dollars, but they're exactly aligned on the major initiatives, the two major initiatives that we're working on. And I think it's important to pull out that in his proposed plan, the lieutenant governor and the governor, to address literacy achievement, that's what we've been working on the last three to four years, provide multi-tiered systems of support for learning, and that's what we've been working on. So I think that that's good, that what we see as professional educators, looking at best practices, looking at our data, is exactly what the governor is looking at as well as far as schools statewide. So that's one piece. Again, if you have any questions going forward, we should get more detail, but I did get a document from our association that spelled out these areas. Those were some of the major highlights that I would like to call attention to you. For the fiscal year 2024, I have some good news to report on the efficiencies that we'll need to be making. I know our finance committee of the board is meeting tomorrow evening, but based on the results of the levy referendum and an updated analysis of our current budget, the district is looking at budget cuts of approximately $250,000. That's less than what we were projecting in August. Two major variables came into play. One is enrollment in the district increased, which had something to do with adjusting of this number. And two, as I reported back, the governor has, his parties in control of both the Senate and the DFL, so we adjusted our forecasted funding formula up a little bit by about a half a percent and that allowed us to get to a target goal there of 250. So good news in that report and then also just based on our current analysis of where we are since we were back in, looking at it in August of 2022. This will potentially be in the form of the three Rs that we've talked about for the last unfortunately four to five now fiscal years of reallocations, reductions, revenue where we can. But I think we're, just due to this number of about a quarter of a million dollars, we're in a little bit better place, but still work to do and we'll give more details later on as you begin to prepare for FY '24 approval of the budget. Superintendent and the business manager, like I said, will meet with our finance committee tomorrow actually. I wanted to just update, because this is becoming a topic of conversation with superintendents and I'll, I'll field these from time to time from staff and from parents. We have facilitated two e-learning days. The statute, the current statute allows districts to use up to five e-learning days in the school calendar. That's what we're allowed to. We have a pre-approved plan for e-learning days. We have communicated it with parents at the beginning of the school year. We currently now have utilized two e-learning days thus far. The statute does not allow us to add e-learning days. There was a time during COVID where the commissioner had temporary authority to facilitate more. We don't have that authority and the commissioner doesn't have that statute authority anymore as well. Some of us superintendents thought that that still was the case, but I think the public needs to know you as a board that approves that annual school calendar is that we only right now. Now there might be again, there has been the last couple of sessions discussion of moving that number up to 10, but that hasn't come to fruition yet as well. So if the district does use all five of the e-learning days, that will be added at the end of the school year, days will be added at the end of the school year and that's per year board-approved school calendar. I will be sharing more detailed information. I did share a little bit more specific information with the administrative committee I met with today at 4:30 to go over my quarter two feedback with regards to my work as superintendent, but we are right in the process of restructuring our entire leadership at the district. I'll, again, like I said, in future date, future meetings, I'll, I'll give you a little bit more detail. We haven't completed the process, but we have a executive leadership team now, which is a small group of leaders that advise me directly as superintendent, went into a retreat about a month, or excuse me, a week ago and restructured everything and it was very invigorating conversation. Now each of those leadership teams will have specific purpose, they'll have their roles and the responsibility of each team, the meeting frequency and the length of time and the membership that is going to be readjusted based on feedback that we've had from our leaders in the, in the district. So it's exciting, we're at a district our size. If we were Minnetaka or Wayzetta, they couldn't do it as quickly as we're doing it. So when we got the right individuals in the room and really started putting this together, and this is not the culmination of just one person, there's a number of people that are involved in this restructuring. So we just got to get back into the leadership now that they're restructured, get back into the membership of those leaderships, show them their purpose, show them their role and quite frankly, some of them will change. The purpose of each leadership team will have to some degree a level of change, including the membership as well. And that concludes my report for this evening. Does the board have any questions for me?
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Shane. Moving on to principals. First up is Ms. Thompson at the intermediate school.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening on behalf of the intermediate school. I'm going to spend my presentation this evening just filling you in a little bit on how we're kind of refocusing and reviewing our focus for the rest of the year. So in January, we always kind of take some steps to look at how far we've come and then make plans for the rest of the year. So just to share a little bit of that with you, in terms of students, our theme for the month of January is independence. So really our focus in our Tiger time has been on remodeling. January is a time when we like to remodel our school-wide expectations, so we've done a little bit on our common area expectations. We'll be talking about digital citizenship expectations coming up this week. So it's just a time for us as a school to kind of refocus on what are the expectations? Are we still meeting them and what do we need to maybe reteach to our students? So that's been our focus for this month. One piece that I'm looking forward to and just in light of our conversation at the work session also is our school SRO, Eric Larson, is going to be coming to speak with our sixth graders actually this week. This week in Tiger time, we're talking about digital citizenship and one of the topics that has come up is how do we teach our kids to respond to things that they see online, particularly our sixth graders who are more active online now? And so he's just going to come and share about, you know, how do you respond when you see cyberbullying, when you see concerning behavior, maybe a friend of yours is talking about self-harm, maybe there are some threats being made online and really just helping them understand like this is how you can respond that will help the situation improve rather than maybe spread the problem or ignore the problem. And so he's going to come and meet with our sixth grade classes on Friday. So he's got a presentation prepared and I think it'll be really helpful and I think it'll be some good conversation for our sixth graders on those topics. So, and then some other pieces just in terms of what our staff has been working on, we rescheduled our fast data analysis training from December for our January PD day. So Ginny Shulke, our MTSS coordinator, did come in and work with our staff to review fast data. One of the things that we did differently this year is we had our staff work through what's called an analysis to action protocol, which the elementary has been doing for a while, but it's just a really specific data protocol that allows our teachers to very clearly identify not only who needs intervention in terms of our students, but also what are the specific areas in which they need intervention and kind of identify where they need to land on those tiers. So we're really appreciative that we have Ginny as a resource in our district. She does a great job walking our staff through those activities. The other thing our staff will be working on this week is our site-based team is meeting for a half-day. We do a half-day about mid-year just to review, these were the goals we set for ourselves at the beginning of the year. Where are we at? Are we making progress? What else, you know, do we need to kind of refocus? What's working, what's not? So that's always a really good and productive day. Our site team does a really great job of creating a communication loop where they'll bring conversation that we have to teachers and feedback back to the team. And so I'm really grateful for that. So it'll be a good conversation just about where we're at with our goals. One piece in specific that they'll be working on is just looking at our current homework practices, grading practices, and how we're engaging parents with some of that because it's still a piece that we're working on in the intermediate school, so that'll be our heavy lifting for that day. And then the other part of that day is our, they're going to be completing a self-assessment of how we're doing with our PBIS Tier One implementation. So how are we doing with our behavior management system? We have all of our Tier One components in place and so it'll be an opportunity for us to talk about how effective are they? Are we being consistent in how we're doing them? What do we need to change and tweak? So we have some good conversation ahead of us just to make sure that we're staying on target for the year and keeping our focus on those goals. And then just along some different things happening in the school, we have I Love to Read Month next month. February is always kind of our focus. And then also, we're excited because on February 3rd, we are introducing a new field trip. Our fourth graders are going ice fishing. So a little bit of a different kind of experience and lots of volunteers are welcome because we'll be, they're taking out two classes at a time, so we're not taking out 180 kids on the ice. We'll be taking about 60, but that's still 60 fourth graders with hooks. So if your background check is clear and you would like to volunteer, we're, we're excited to welcome you. We actually do have a good number of volunteers. I think there's a lot of people who maybe typically wouldn't volunteer to chaperone a field trip who are really excited to come and help our kids with this experience. So it should be fun. We're looking forward to it. Andy Brown is kind of leading that up. So that's what's happening right now in the intermediate school. Do you have any comments or questions?
Ice fishing.
February 3rd, Lake Independence, pending positive ice conditions, whatever that means. I'm not terribly familiar with ice fishing.
The school bus?
The school bus will not be going the ice, no. And he's working with, he's working with someone who's done this with a number of schools and it escapes me now, someone from McConie, I believe, and All Seasons is providing the bait and so it's just a good opportunity to bring in some different community groups. So it should be fun. No one will fall in and Andy keeps telling me no one will fall in. So, yeah.
I think it's also influential too that it's something that kids can actually learn from too. I mean, a lot of people aren't fish, it's, you're kind of either like a big fisher or you're not a fisher at all, but it's still like the learning experience too, so.
We talk a lot about how kids our age need to be exposed to different experiences. They maybe wouldn't get that opportunity otherwise, so I know my kid wouldn't, I wouldn't take them, but I think he'll have fun doing it. So, you know, might spark some new interest for our kids. So, yeah, it'd be great. Hopefully.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, high school assistant principal, Mr. Baughman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a pleasure to speak with you tonight on behalf of Mr. Voight and Delano High School. Mr. Voight is unable to attend because he's hosting our last parent information meeting tonight regarding registration. Hopefully, as you know by now, our building is transitioning to a brand-new schedule, so we will transition next year to a six-by-three-by-two, which is a six-period day trimesters, three trimesters, and the two goes for that the core classes are two of the three trimesters. So continuing on that topic, I'd also like to highlight, while parents have had several opportunities to attend these informational sessions and tonight is the last one, it was pretty exciting today, we actually got to roll out this information to our students. So today, we met with current sophomores and juniors to highlight the registration process, to highlight the change in schedule, credit requirements, graduation requirements, and overall expectations with registration as far as being intentional with the courses that they select, both that they're interested in here now while they're at DHS, but potentially courses that could propel them to pursue further interests for life after, after high school. We did hand out registration materials to our sophomores and juniors today. Those materials included an actual registration sheet. Students will register on their own at home, so we are not going to do a mass registration within the school day. We learned very, very quickly that is nearly impossible and if you talk to Chris Larson, she gets very angry because we shut down food services because of the amount of traffic we had during the registration process last year. So it was just too much to handle, it was too much for Skyward to handle. So students will have a registration window. If you really want to compare it to something, think of registering for your freshman year of university. So they, the window will open February 1st at 3:00 PM and that window will be open until February 7th. So between that time, students will have some time to review the materials, talk to their family, talk to their friends and peers as we know they do, to make hopefully some informed decisions, because those decisions are critical in creating the master schedule and obviously our FTE allocation and section allocation. I would also like to note that all registration information is posted on our guidance and counseling webpage under, under registration. There's also some helpful videos, links, additional materials, course descriptions within that, both within our own programming, but also the Wright Technical Center that was heard about earlier. And finally, on February 6th, from 3:00 to 5:00, counselors and administrative staff will be on hand just for informal drop-ins for students and parents if, should they have any questions or should they have any issues with the registration process. I can tell you right now, our counselors are already busy because they're kind of, they're, they're having to deal with two very different issues. Number one is the schedule change window is upon us because we did start quarter three today, so students have until Friday to change schedules. But now that we've rolled out that information in meeting with students to discuss the new schedule and course opportunities that our students have. So again, that window is open February 1st at 3:00 PM until February 7th for students to register. The second thing I'd like to update is regarding our strategic work plan at the high school. As Mr. Shane had mentioned in his report, MTSS is a focus of the state, but it's also a focus of our district and in particular, our building. So our, we have staff members, teachers and administrators that have been part of the district initiative, working with the Department of Education in really being intentional with our MTSS process, which is an area of growth and an area of focus here at the high school, to be 100% honest. So we, we basically paused our MTSS model. It was a much more informal process rolling out up until this point, but I'm happy to report now that the more formalized process via our student success team will reconvene next week and we will continue to work and support staff to implement the tiers of intervention. And I know her name was mentioned earlier, but I cannot say enough, Ms. Shulke has been a tremendous asset in, in supporting our staff in the MTSS process. Finally, with respect to our strategic plan, CISO did facilitate student listening sessions today that took place in our Tiger Den. And then if you saw the email that came out from Mr. Voight, there is also going to be a community conversation on Monday, January 30th, which will be supported by CISO, but also helped facilitated by staff members who have volunteered to be part of that process. And again, that is still just part of that student, staff and parent slash community engagement process as we work on continuously improving our school climate and culture, which no matter, the school year is always something that can be improved and always something that can be, can be focused on. Finally, I know Mr. Voight has a tradition of celebrating individual successes in these reports, so I'd like to call out, congratulate five students who will be signing their national letters of intent next week. They are Bella Molitor, who'll be attending the University of Sioux Falls for tennis, Carly Stuckmeyer, University of Wisconsin Superior softball, Jackson Stewart, University of Sioux Falls football, Addie Persian, Grinnell College tennis, and Kaylee Scanlon, Winona State University softball. So congratulations to these five student athletes who will be sharing their talents and education at the next level. With these updates, that concludes my report for you this evening. Are there any questions? Are there any questions or comments about items going on at Delano High School?
Any questions for Mr. Baughman?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Ms. Schultz from the elementary school.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the elementary school. It was a fun Monday at the elementary school, and I'm going to save that story till the very end, but I got paid attention all the way through. January is kind of one of those months where we're coming off the break, which was extended with some weather. So we're getting back into routines and also our fast data. We started that. K-1 is taking a very long time. It's that one-on-one assessment. Ginny Schulke, once again, named by all of us, she has been coming over to help administer those assessments. So it takes about 20 to 25 minutes per student times 25 times seven or eight sections. So it does take a long time, which is something we are kind of evaluating as well, just because Ginny may not always be here. So we have to somehow find a way to get that same information in an efficient way so we're not taking staff away from teaching. But aside from that, we do have our second and third grade data that came in. So our A reading and A math, we're progressing nicely from 69 to 71 in our, with our second graders and in math, 75 to 76. So little uptick there, which is good. We learned that our phonics fluency is still that area that we are going to continue to work on with our second graders. And A reading for our third graders went from 85 to 87. So that's a strong number. So we're happy with that. Took a dip in our, our A math from 88 to 79. Looking close at that, we're just noticing that that's where our basic facts and that multiplication is starting to kick in, which they're just learning. And we know that that's a gap in everyday math, which is something our math committee is looking at because we have to supplement that fact fluency portion. So we know kind of our areas that we need to target with our second and third graders, and we'll be able to dig more into that in February at our late start. In January, we had our PD mini-conference with staff, and that was really well-received. Staff had a lot of choice in which sessions they could attend. So that was really, really a good way for staff to kind of hone in on what their interests were at that point, maybe get some relicenter taken care of too. So it was a very productive day for staff. It is para recognition week this week, so we are showering our paras that we really love and need in our buildings. So we are honoring them this week, and that is throughout the district too. I mean, we have ours at Delano Elementary School, but subs come over from the other buildings during ESY and summer school. We have subs there, bus para subs. So all of those paras are so important. So we are having some fun this week honoring them. Our new music teacher, Monica Healy, started. She is taking over Sharon Day's position at the elementary school. So sounded like she had a good first day with the elementary kids. And next month is I Love to Read Month. So there'll be lots happening at the elementary school for I Love to Read Month, and you'll have some special guests here as well next month. Some second graders are going to be coming to read next month. And then today, this is the story. Today, we got to surprise a student with a trip to Walt Disney World because of the Booster-Thon fundraiser. So all of the Booster-Thon candidates and anybody that did a Booster-Thon event across the nation was put into this drawing, and a kindergartner from Delano Elementary was selected. So we got her family in, and we did this whole thing and announced her name. And Molly Graham, of course, recorded it, so that'll be hitting social media soon. But anyway, it was a very, very fun, kind of one-in-a-million surprise with one of our students at Delano. So great way to start the day. Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, business manager, Mary Reader.
Just very short. Matt and I and the finance and the administrators have been working on the budget revenue reallocations, reductions for FY '24, and we have our finance committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, so we'll discuss that. And then just to reiterate that I'll present the preliminary FY '24 budget in May, and it'll be finalized at the June board meeting per statute. Thank you.
Any questions for Mary?
Community Ed with Eric.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thanks for letting me here to talk about community education. I want to take some time to not necessarily report on what we're doing, but talk about a, an exercise we recently went through. I asked our advisory council to give me their thoughts on four key questions. And those four questions were kind of like, big picture, what could community ed be like? You know, no restrictions, just big picture. Then we asked them, what, what are our community needs? Third question is, what is missing from our programs or if it is not represented? And then the last one is, I really wanted to, I want to get a better feel for what they wanted their role to be. So I asked them, you know, the purpose of that group and their role. So we did an exercise that we just called Stick Your Thoughts. So we had these four questions up in our conference room. Members would, would write down their thoughts on sticky notes and stick them up there. We then repeated the same process with our coordinator staff and then extrapolated that data to kind of see where we're at. The people who create and implement programs, what are their views on these questions as well as what our advisory council is? And why I wanted to share that information is that those that have a voice, that, that give us perspective from the community are right in line with those that are creating programs for our community. So the amount of similarity that we found in these responses not only gave me confidence that, that our staff was heading in the right direction, but it also reiterated the, the role and the value that the advisory council brings to certainly me as the director, but for our program as well. So I found those things to be really rewarding, and our staff also then felt like they're in line with what members of the community were asking for, as well as, you know, their feedback is, they value it. The things that they're asking advisory councils to do and share with them, the same things that the advisory council members feel like their role is. So we saw a lot of synergy between both what, what we're seeing in our advisory council and what our staff are saying. And then the next piece of that is, one thing that came out of it is, that I thought was really interesting, is someone had said like, they wanted to know like, what are the questions? What should our advisory council should be asking of the community ed? What should we be asking of those that work in that program? So at our last advisory council meeting, I asked our advisory council members to do that, to kind of think about some of those harder questions to challenge us as a program, to really make sure that we are meeting the needs of our community, to make sure that there, there aren't any gaps in our program and that there's people who aren't involved with that. So that's the other piece. And, and some of that too comes, we had a meeting with Superintendent Shane where he had asked, and I said, ask his leadership team to, to throw arrows at ideas, to, to question why we're doing certain things and to play devil's advocate. And those are the types of questions that I'm asking advisory council members to do too, is to challenge us as a program so that we can challenge our coordinators to make sure that when we go to create programs and where we identify community needs, that, that we're asking those critical questions about how we structure this program, who can participate? Have we, have we put barriers in front of people in our community where they're not allowed to participate? Those are the types of questions that I, I want our advisory council members, members of our community to challenge us with so that in turn, as our, as our staff goes to build and create programs that, that we're making sure that we're identifying those areas that might be our blind spots to ensure that those in our community can participate. So as you were talking about your roles with different committees this morning, this was my plan to talk about it with this group. So I just wanted to share that and, and, you know, we have a couple of members who have played a role in our advisory council, and that feedback is not always invaluable to me, but our staff has identified that, that feedback is valuable to them. So I just wanted to share that experience. Otherwise, anything else in regards to community education or activities? I can take any questions or anything about this little exercise we did as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Eric.
All right. Moving on to student board representative reports.
All right. Like I said earlier, probably pretty short today. We've both been very busy, and I think at least all of the high schoolers I know have also been very busy because we just finished out our second quarter. So we are done with our first half of the year, which means that students start a new classes today, which is very exciting, especially for me and all of the other seniors because we're like halfway there.
We had focus groups today in the high school. That was really nice. Brief feedback from elementary and intermediate, just I Love to Read Month between both schools. It's pretty short and sweet, but yeah, good feedback, negative, positive. I think it'll be good to put everything together and see where we are as a school community.
Yeah. And I think students will really appreciate the effort to include them in, you know, discussions about what happens in their schools on all the levels. So I think we're moving in a good direction for that aspect. And that's it from us.
All right. Thank you, guys. All right. Moving on to board reports. Masiko.
Yes, I will be brief tonight. There are two main things of the minutes for Masiko that I wanted to point out. Number one was that we approved our executive director's contract. So we went with a three-year contract. Melissa has done amazing things to move the co-op in the right direction. And so I think we were able to come to a contract that was competitively in terms of the market, but also show a commitment to her as our leader and her commitment to the, the co-op as well. So pretty excited about that. And then the second thing, we had started at the beginning of this school year to include kind of a program update similar to how our building administrators share what's going on in their buildings. We've asked all of our program leaders to share what's going on. So whether that's the TREC program, which is our, for our autism, or our Journeys, some of our behavioral-based or right, not Rite Tech, Village Ranch, some of the Court Place programs. So what you'll see in the meetings now going forward is just kind of a little synopsis of what's going on in that building. And it can, I think it will provide a good way for everybody and really the public, if they're interested, to just get a little bit of a flavor on what the co-op does to serve not only students within our member districts, but also the greater state of Minnesota, as well as kind of in some cases, some, some kiddos from North and South Dakota neighboring states. So anyway, just wanted to share that, so that'll be in there going forward. Any questions?
Any questions for me? All right. Next up, Rite Tech Center.
I, I think Brian's words spoke more volume than I can add to anything. I mean, as usual, his biggest concern is that all students know these opportunities are there, and I think Delano does a really good job compared to some of the other districts. So I think during registration, he just wants to make sure that anyone that has interest in one of these classes has the opportunity.
Jim, is all, are all of the programs they can choose or are some of them that you have to be referred?
Specifically, the Rite Academy. Is that like a choice program or do the member districts have to refer students to that?
Right. The Rite Academy is a referral.
Okay. You can't just choose to go there?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Well, technically you can. You can choose, but for the most part, it's a referral usually in our district. We have a very, very small number of students, maybe one or two, if, if that, that we refer to the, to the academy. The Rite Tech Center is all by sophomore, current sophomores and juniors can choose. It's in the registration handbook guide, and those, those courses are out there and advertised as, as an option. And I will say that, back to Brian's, I was just looking at his slideshow as well. The number that we have this year is close to the all-time high if you look back to 1999, which is really good. We had a different enrollment in 1999, so the percentage of the total student body, junior, senior, is probably not there, but the numbers have, have trended in the right direction, I think. And just getting those kids, those opportunities and those experiences is important. It's a good partnership.
I guess I didn't really ask how our new scheduling affects.
It actually is better.
It's better, okay.
Yeah.
Was Bob saying that you were really in the meeting?
He was.
Really?
Yes. Right. So this, you've listened to the Kiki Morning Show? Maybe? He, he was on it and I don't know.
He serves on the Buffalo over school.
Yeah. He's on what? Buffalo, right? Yeah, he's on the Rite Tech. It really wasn't.
He makes it colorful.
He was like, oh my God, Jim Gerke's on this. Anyway, go ahead.
Did you see, did you see Adam?
Yeah.
Anyway, moving on, professional development.
I attended the December 20th meeting for the Professional Development Committee. They, as mentioned by a couple of the administrators, were working on planning the mini-conference session for Martin Luther King Day and also starting to plan and define more the role for the PD committee in relation to all the other efforts that are going on throughout the district. And so there's some reorganization that's been looked at and to figure out how the space, because the actual professional development role in the district is significant to support our teachers in, in their efforts to pursue continued education and licensure and, 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 the policy is very extensive. And so there's work that's being occurring for that.
Any questions for you?
And then I attended the Schools for Equity, which met on Friday. They had Commissioner Jett and then Adosch from the Department of Ed. They covered essentially what Matt covered in his report and then a little bit more on the Governor's due north plan. They're hoping for 4% on the budget in 2024 and 2% in 2025. They talked a bit about fixing the compensatory funding, but not any specifics. Talked about special education funding and fixing the cross-subsidy a little bit by addressing about 50% of that this year. They are also looking though to fully fund all school lunches, which seem to be a bit higher of a priority according to Adosch. He pointed out that that may cause issues with not only the 50% repaired across subsidy, but other priorities as well, because it's going to cost more, he thinks, than the governor is expecting it to cost. They're looking at a 25% increase in the English language learner funding and a mixed delivery of 13,000 more pre-K spots. They are looking to support more paraprofessional funding, social-emotional funding, MTSS, still prioritizing their bold literacy plan, which actually really aligns well with what Delano's been doing in literacy work, and we will be ahead of the game there. So a really nice job by our administrators. A lot of what they're requesting in that bold literacy plan, most of our teachers will have done, and we won't be trying to play catch-up there. So really nice job by our staff to get ahead of that.
What was the pre-K piece?
They're looking to fund 13,000 more spots for pre-K. But how they're going to set those up and who's going to be allowed to take them, they want to do a mixed delivery, and that's going to involve some infighting. So don't get super excited yet. Biggest part is they're trying to tie the formula to inflation, but that will be capped either 3% or 4%. Adosch couldn't remember the exact number, but he said it won't go negative. And then there's the potential of auto-renewing already-approved voter levies, and he thinks that may pass this year. And so that's kind of what's going on at the Capitol, lots of spending. See what happens.
Yeah, I would, I would, from Delano's perspective, my opinion, just my humble opinion, the priority would be inflationary adjusted to that funding formula, the cross-subsidy, not free lunch for everybody. That I believe resources can go elsewhere. I have communicated that to our representative, Joe McDonald, plan to have a conversation with Senator Anderson that represents our area as well. I am all in favor if we need to, we, in Delano, we need to increase the threshold of who would meet the level of free, actually free lunches, because it's not reduced anymore. That got changed years ago, because we do have families in our community that are just on the edge and they don't qualify, and that's a struggle for them. So if they want to invest some dollars to increase the threshold, I'm all for it. But if somebody that makes a million dollars a year, I think they can afford to pay $3 for their lunch for their kid in school. And we have constituents in our community that does that, that have those means to be able to do that. I think education funding should go towards education funding. But again, I'm not, I think that there is a need in the state and even in our community, but not to the, just to point-blank cover everybody's lunch that they get free.
Can the state legislature change that free threshold or is that a federal?
It's set at the fed level, but they, like, they took over covering the reduced piece. What they could do is offer, you know, saying, okay, this is what the feds is, but we could...
We're going to cover this much more.
Right.
Their thought is to cover everything else.
It would be messy. But I mean, I think they kind of kicked... But I mean, I think they kind of kicked that in already this year by allowing direct certification for any families on Medicaid, whether it's free or reduced. So we, that number of our free and reduced kids increased by 30% this year just based on that.
Right, and what Adosch was saying is, it's going to be really expensive in that they don't have those numbers back yet, but it is going to affect everything in that governor's proposal, and when those numbers come back, there's going to be a lot of things that get cut out. So cross subsidy, he said, is a priority, but everything else, the lunches seems to be the governor's number one priority right now, which is interesting.
Aren't other things tied to free and reduced lunch status?
Which is why they're going to change compensatory funding.
Compensatory revenue, which by adding in the Medicaid piece, everybody's compensatory revenue for next year is going up. My fear is that they're going to prorate it because everything, the, everything has a cap, so now that you've increased every single school district's number of free and reduced students, which is tied to compensatory revenue, is there going to be a cap on that? They've said no, but legally, but when I see it...
It would be interesting if they would allow us to auto-renew our levy and deal with the special cross subsidy, how that would just change what we could do in our district and then give us the four and the two, and then tie it to inflation. Like, just those few things would allow districts across the state to just level set.
Yep, it would be equitable for everybody in that regard.
But he said the priority is the free lunches right now, and I don't know where that came out of, but they kept going back to that throughout the meeting.
That's a city of the first class, St. Paul, Minneapolis, Roch, Duluth, St. Cloud, Mankato. But it's, you know, even in those school districts, there are, there's some priorities. That's what I said, is if we could work on figuring out a threshold of some sort to increase and to meet some of the needs of those families, right, but I just don't think it's a one-size-fits-all solution, and I think the resources that it would take to get there is, to Rachel's point, is going to take away from more meaningful things that could affect this district.
So that was your C meeting. It was interesting. Any other questions? All right, moving on to old business. First up is to approve the second read of Policy 722, Public Data and Data Subject Requests, a new policy, which we went over in the work session last month.
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Amy, do we have a second? Second. Second from Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business, approve the first read of Policy 419, Tobacco-Free Environment, Possession and Use of Tobacco, Tobacco-related Devices and Electronic Delivery Devices, Vaping Awareness and Prevention Instruction Due to Substantive Changes. We went over this in work session. Do we have a motion to approve the first read of Policy 419?
I'll move.
All right, motion by Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by...
Jim.
Jim, sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next up is to approve the first read of Policy 534, School Meals Policy Due to Substantive Changes. We also went over that in work session. Do we have a motion to approve the first read of Policy 534?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Corey, second.
A second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There's nothing else on the agenda. We are adjourned. Not a one-minute short journey. Thank you.